Don't bring that fever.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to this Brookley County Board of Education meeting this Monday, June 2nd, 2025. I call this meeting to order. I declare a quorum of members as present and the media has been notified. For the record, Mr. McQuillan is sick but he is on the phone, so we have a full board. I'll now entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Make the motion. Second?
There's a motion by Mr. Ramsey, a second by Ms. Littleton to approve the agenda. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. The ayes have it, nine zero. I'll now entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the board meeting on May 19th, 2025.
Make the motion. Second?
There's a motion by Mr. Ramsey, a second by Ms. Littleton to approve the board meetings for May 19th, 2025. Are there any corrections or changes? Discussion according to the minutes. Hearing none, we'll call the question. All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. The ayes have it, nine zero. I'll now entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the budget workshop on May 19th, 2025.
Make a motion. Second?
There's a motion by Ms. Davenport, a second by Ms. Littleton to approve the minutes of the budget workshop on May 19th, 2025. Are there any discussions, changes, or edits to those minutes? Hearing none, we'll call the question. All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. The ayes have it, nine zero. I will now entertain a motion to enter into executive session.
Make the motion. Second?
There's a motion by Mr. Ramsey, a second by Ms. Littleton to enter into executive session. The stated purpose of executive session is the discussion of employment contracts and/or appointments of administrators as needed. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. The ayes have it, nine zero. We are in executive session.
I'll now entertain a motion to return to regular session.
So move.
I made a motion, second.
There's a motion by Ms. Bradley, a second by Mr. Ramsey to return to regular session. Is there any discussion? Like to state for the record that no action was taken in executive session. There's no further discussion, I'll call the question. All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, nine zero, we are in regular session. Please now stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We'll now move on to difference makers and special recognitions. Ms. Katie Tanner, you are recognized.
Good evening Chair Wofford, Superintendent Dixon, members of the board, and everyone who has joined us this evening. Tonight is an exciting night, we are recognizing our individual and team track and field state champions, as well as our boys golf champions. Overall, we had five schools win individual gold medals at the state track and field championships. Timberland High, Goose Creek High, Cane Bay High, Stratford High, and Philip Simmons High. Philip Simmons High School in the Class 2A Division. So first up this evening, if y'all will join us down in front. We will first recognize Timberland High School's Carter Hawkins. He was named the triple jump state champion in Class 2A Track and Field. Congratulations to Carter.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Do you want to speak?
Good evening, my name is Coach Jim Befoni. It's my first year here in Berkeley County, and had the pleasure of working with Carter this year. Carter's an outstanding young man, he's a sophomore, his third year competing in track and field, and he did a wonderful job, and a very competitive young man. Increased his triple jump this year by four feet to win the state championship. So, congratulations Carter.
Next up from Goose Creek High, Courtney Horn ran away with a gold medal in the 100-meter hurdles in Class 5A Division 2. Way to go Courtney.
Courtney is just a ninth grader, she's got a great future ahead of her. She won the hurdles, and I think it was the fastest time in the state of any classification, so she's got a bright future, she's a great student, she's fun to be around, and we appreciate you having her.
And next up from Cane Bay High, Jaden Anderson is a two-time state individual champion, taking first place in the 110-meter hurdles and the 400-meter hurdles in the Class 5A Division 1. Awesome job Jaden.
Jaden became the 14th and 15th state individual champion at Cane Bay High School. He is also the third individual to win two state titles in the same year. And he's actually our fifth and sixth hurdler to win state titles in both the 110s and the 400-meter hurdles. Jaden will be going to Charleston Southern University next year to run.
Alright, and Stratford High, Lucas Colak took home first place in the pole vault in Class 5A Division 1. Way to vault over the competition Lucas.
Last but not least you.
Just real quick, Lucas being only a junior on the track team, he broke the school record five different times in 11 competitions this year. And one of the beauties of being a junior is that we fully expect him to be right back here next year, all over again.
Alright, now for our Philip Simmons High School girls. Philip Simmons High School won multiple individual medals and a girls' track and field team championship in Class 2A. Both the girls and the boys four-by-800-meter relay teams smoked the competition and took Individually, Ashley Rouge was a two-time individual champion in the girls' long jump and pole vault. Likewise, Laura Perry ran away with two gold medals for her performance in the girls' 1600-meter and girls' 3200-meter races. Lastly, Flynn Taylor won an individual gold medal in the 800-meter race, way to outrun the competition iron horses. And that is not the end of our iron horses. We also are congratulating the Philip Simmons High School Boys Golf Team, who left it all on the green and won a team state championship in the Class 2A Boys Golf. Coach Tamon Garrick is here to represent the team tonight. Congratulations iron horses.
had a big year for our students, so extremely proud of them, and that concludes us for tonight, but we will be back again next time with some more state champions.
Move on to Agenda Item 5A, citizen comments. In order to conduct the meeting in an orderly and efficient manner, we ask that you honor the following guidelines. Stakeholder comments are welcomed and encouraged, however, the board will not take immediate action on public comments at this meeting. Any person wishing to address the board must register prior to the meeting. Comments must be regarding programs, policies, or procedures. Comments regarding complaints against employees other than district-level executives or references to students other than the child of the speaker will not be heard in public session. Groups addressing the same topic should select one speaker. Comments will be limited to three minutes per speaker. The board chair reserves the right to allot additional time or halt public comments that do not adhere to the guidelines. Our speaker tonight is Alana Lewis, school librarians.
Good evening, everyone. I am, for a couple more days, one of your school librarians. As a board, I know y'all claim to be fiscally responsible, but I feel like you're wasting one of your most precious resources, which is your librarians and media specialists. We're teaching professionals who at minimum are required to have a master's degree, but we are often the forgotten employees of BCSD. We don't have a section on the instructional hub, and our instructional roles and the possibilities we bring are often ignored. We can be dictated to when it comes to blocking DISCUS or banning books, but we aren't even included on the all-teacher email list, nor were we recognized a single time during National School Library Month. And on a personal petty note, I really appreciated the total lack of recognition when I received the South Carolina State Librarian Award, thanks for inviting me to a board meeting to celebrate that. I know that other roles within the district feel similarly overlooked, but I can only speak as a librarian. I know I've said this before, probably to this board, but I love my school, my students, admin, teachers, and staff, and I feel the praise constantly at my school level. If the district respected librarians as professionals, I would probably never choose to leave, but the lack of respect, lack of enriching professional development, and lack of support constantly frustrates me. Librarians are often an island in their own school, so having that support outside of our school is really important. In addition, the inexplicable decision to block the only research databases we had access to via the state library's SCDISCUS was the final nail in the coffin for me. I'd already tried and been denied to purchase additional databases for my school. If you look up the South Carolina State Department Standards for School Library Resources, having access to DISCUS is implied, and only supposed to be a portion of the periodical resources available to school libraries and their populations. Taking away DISCUS effectively tied our hands, and to add insult to injury, teachers and librarians were never directly told this happened, or when the resources were restored. I know at the high school where they first discovered it, librarians were trying to fix the computers and power wash them because that's what we do, and then found out that it was blocked from within. Alternate resources were not provided. Google Scholar is cumbersome and beyond the reading level of my middle schoolers. Instead of making unilateral decisions that affected entire district, perhaps you would like to talk to multiple librarians about the work they do. Of course, a student can look up something their parents might disagree with. Even in the days of paper encyclopedias, students might stumble across terrorism on their way to finding tarantula in the T-volume. Part of the role of librarians, teachers, and parents is to teach students to be responsible information seekers. Next school year, you'll be doing it without one award-winning dual masters librarian, but you still have other amazing librarians for now. Please support your library workers so they can do the important work of educating students, supporting teachers, and working with parents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we'll move on to items from executive session.
Superintendent report.
Ms. Davenport.
Yes, Superintendent report. We're gonna skip that.
Oh, sorry, Dr. Dixon, I completely skipped over you. I wrote over top of it, I apologize. I wrote notes over top of it. 6A Superintendent's report.
No problem. Thank you Board Chair Wofford, and our board members, and everyone in our audience today. Greetings. Last week was our Super Bowl. We celebrated 10 graduations and honored 2,500, over 2,500 outstanding graduates. And the BCSD class of 2025 earned an incredible $47.8 million in academic and athletic scholarships. Graduates, we are so very proud of you. Your resilience, determination, and heart have inspired us all, and we cannot wait to see what, the amazing things that you'll accomplish in the future. And we kicked off graduation season with our also inspiring Project Search Ceremony, the program made possible through a partnership between Berkeley County School District. The program made possible through a partnership between Berkeley County School District, Berkeley County Government, and South Carolina Vocational Rehabilitation, prepares young people with special needs for success and employment opportunities. We had four amazing graduates that are now employed and have completed the Project Search Program, so congratulations to those students, the Project Search Class of 2025. We also celebrated our alternative certification staff and program completers. These are a group of passionate professionals who have chosen to make a difference in education as a second career, and congratulations and thank you for joining our mission. While school is officially out for summer, learning continues. This morning, I was on the road at 6:00 AM, and I had to be reminded why I see school buses running, because our third-grade summer reading camps are underway, and they're offering engaging, project-based instruction to help our students grow. I want to be able to, at the next board meeting, having several instructional updates regarding summer reading camps and the different various programs with our students' mental health and instructional programs, so we'll share some of those highlights with you. But a big thank you to the teachers, principals, and staff for making that possible. Once again, congratulations to the Berkeley High School Stags baseball team for winning the 5A Division II state title in baseball, so congratulations to them. It is a nice little bragging point when you go to superintendent's meetings in the state, and you have so many state champions and so many academic accomplishments that are taking place in Berkeley County schools, so we will be celebrating them here soon. We're also proud of our iReady super schools, Westview Elementary, Hanahan Middle, Carolyn Lewis School, and Kane Hoi Elementary. Your growth in reading and math is something to be proud of, so thank you to those four schools and all of our schools who showed growth in iReady, but thank you specifically to those four who showed the highest amount of growth in the district for the spring iReady assessment, so congratulations. My comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Dixon. We'll now move on to Agenda Item 7A, Action as Required from Executive Session.
Madam Chair, I move to accept the personnel recommendations of the administration as discussed in Executive Session for the current school year.
Second.
There's a motion by Ms. Davenport, a second by Mr. Ramsey. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, nine zero.
Madam Chair, I move to accept the recommendation of the administration to name Mark Blacklock as the Assistant Principal at Stratford High School with a contract to begin July 14, 2025.
Second. There's a motion by Ms. Littleton, a second by Ms. Davenport. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, nine zero. And if your admin team is here, we want to grab a picture of you and your admin team before you jet out on us.
I also move to accept the recommendation of the administration to name Brendan McFadden as the Assistant Principal at Sedgfield Middle School.
Second.
With a contract to begin July 14, 2025.
Second.
Mr. Ramsey, seconds it all. Motion by Ms. Littleton, second by Mr. Ramsey. Brendan McFadden, Assistant Principal at Sedgfield Middle School, and the contract is July 14, 2025. Is there any additional discussion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, nine zero. Congratulations to Mr. McFadden. Mr. McFadden is moving to South Carolina from out of state, so he is not able to be here tonight, but he will be here next week for summer leadership, so congratulations. I know he's watching online. Congratulations, Mr. McFadden.
Madam Chair, I move to accept the recommendation of the administration to name Kristen Clark as the Assistant Principal at Goose Creek High with a contract to begin July 14, 2025.
Second. All right, who defers? Who's got the second? Ms. Littleton. There's a motion by Mr. Ramsey, a second by Ms. Littleton. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, nine zero.
Madam Chair, I move to accept the recommendation of the administration to name Sarah O'Neill as the Assistant Principal at Whitesville Elementary School with a contract to begin July 14, 2025.
Second.
There's a motion by Ms. Bradley, a second by Ms. Littleton. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, nine zero.
Madam Chair, I move to accept the recommendation of the administration to name Brittany Seibert as the Assistant Principal at Goose Creek High School with a contract to begin July 14, 2025.
Second. There's a motion by Mr. Ramsey, a second by Ms. Davenport. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, nine zero. Congratulations, Ms. Seibert.
Madam Chair, I move to accept the recommendation of the administration to name Larry Odom as a coordinator at Berkeley Alternative School with a contract to begin July 14, 2025.
Second. There's a motion by Ms. Davenport, a second by Wofford. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, nine zero.
Madam Chair, I move to accept the recommendation of the administration to name Juanita Waring, my former sixth-grade student at Sedgfield Middle, as the Assistant Principal at Sangory Intermediate School with a contract to begin July 14, 2025.
Second.
There's a motion by Ms. Bradley, a second by Mr. Borden. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, nine zero. Certainly last but not least, I move to accept the recommendation of the administration to name Jonah Bryant as the Director of Berkeley Alternative School with a contract to begin July 1, 2025.
Second.
There's a motion by Wofford, a second by Mr. Ramsey. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, nine zero. Thank you so much. Thank you to everyone for taking on leadership responsibilities, and thank you for the families who support all of our leaders, because this is certainly a family effort when you are a school administrator, so thank you for taking on that challenge. We appreciate you so much. If you came to just be recognized tonight, we're perfectly fine with you going and celebrating your new job. If you would like to excuse yourself, now is the okay time. If you would like to participate in the board meeting, please stay on, but if you would like to step out, that is completely acceptable. 8A, District 8, Board Member, Mr. JB Borden, new Board Member Committee Assignment, and Mr. Borden will be assigned to Capital Planning. Temporary committee assignments is not needed. Everyone is physically present, and Mr. McQuillan is on the phone. So we'll now recess for committee meetings, and we'll start with Academics and Innovation. Ms. Littleton, you're recognized.
I'm calling the Committee on Academics and Innovation to order. I declare there's a quorum of committee members present and note that the media has been given proper notice pursuant to the Freedom of Information Act. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved, Madam Chair.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion's approved, three to zero. The first item on the agenda is the Head Start Budget Expenditure Report for April 2025, Head Start Credit Report for April 2025, and Revive BCSD Head Start Calendar. What's the pleasure of the committee?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Passes three to zero. On the second item of the agenda is BCSD 2025-2026 Local Board Approved Courses. Dr. Gilman, you're recognized.
Good evening, Committee Chair Littleton, Superintendent Dixon, and School Board Members. Thank you for the opportunity to present an additional course for the 2025-2026 Local Board Approved Courses proposed for the fall of 2025. For the 2025-26 academic year, we are bringing forward one additional new course approval, Avid Ninth Grade. Avid is the Advancement Via Individual Determination Course. The Avid program is nationally recognized, dealing with college and career readiness that supports students participating, those in the academic middle, by teaching them skills and mindsets necessary to succeed in rigorous coursework, graduate on time, and pursue post-secondary education and career pathways. Adding Avid Ninth Grade as a local board-approved course gives students a structured support system during a critical transition year. Freshman year often sets the tone for a student's high school experience. Avid helps ensure students start strong by offering explicit instruction in study skills, organization, time management, and goal setting; support with writing, inquiry, collaboration, and reading; a peer cohort of motivated learners working toward academic and personal success; college and career exploration, including guest speakers, college visits, and resume building; mentoring and tutoring opportunities that promote confidence and independence. By offering Avid in Ninth Grade, Berkeley County School District is investing in a proactive approach to reduce the dropout risk, increase on-time graduation, close opportunity gaps, and equip students with skills that align with our portrait of a graduate and long-term district goals. The Division of Academics and Innovation is recommending your approval of this local board-approved course for the 2025-2026 school year as presented tonight.
Thank you. I make a motion to approve the updated 2025-2026 Local Board Approved Courses as provided.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Madam Chair, may I ask a question? Is this going to be at all the high schools? Avid?
Thank you.
Board Chair Wofford, to Dr. Dixon, board members, this particular course of study will be exclusively available to all students across the system, but certainly in the 25-26 school year intentionally in the early college program at Timberland High School. We find that embedding Avid as a course that students can take, particularly based on all of the strategies, you know, the learning outcomes, the infusion of the things that you heard mentioned in the course design, it will exacerbate their opportunities for success, not only as ninth graders, but as they plan their trajectory in the rigorous course of study through the early college program.
Thank you.
So it won't be a possibility right now to be offered virtually. It will only be in person at Timberland.
It will be in person at Timberland. Those who are involved, meaning the teachers and administration, they would have to be Avid-certified. We have a team of individuals that you've already approved through the board process to go to the Avid Summer Institute to be certified, and so they will be able to deliver that curriculum.
It's an, I'm sorry. It is an excellent program. I'm glad we're bringing it in.
So are you looking to enlarge it possibly in the next school term?
It will be expanded in the next school term, because of course, the ninth graders will become 10th graders, and the 10th graders inevitably will become 11th and then 12th graders, but across the system, once we pilot this success, it certainly could be scaled to all high schools, middle and high schools.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Middleton. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Passes three to zero. We have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion's approved, three to zero.
I'm calling the Committee on Finance and Human Resources to order. I declare it as a quorum of committee members present and note that the media has been given proper notice pursuant to the Freedom of Information Act. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion is approved by a vote of three, two, zero. The first agenda item is out-of-state travel. Ms. Marcy Averson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Committee Chairman Ramsey, Board Chairman Wofford, board members, Dr. Dixon. Tonight, we are requesting approval of out-of-state travel as presented.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve out-of-state travel as presented by the administration.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Any discussion? Go ahead, Ms. Wofford.
I do want to point out, somebody recently asked me this question, so all travel comes here, even if kids have raised money, or parents have paid money, or the school has fundraised in any way, so just because something is on the out-of-state travel does not mean it's school district money that is sending someone to take a trip. For example, my son is getting ready to go to Beta Club, and I made multiple $250 payments because he didn't sell any donuts for him to be able to go, so his travel for that $1,300 travel request would come through here, but it's not the school district's money that we're paying to send my child to the Beta Club. So I don't know, I felt like the question that I got asked, like, you guys are spending so much money on letting kids travel, which even if we were spending our money, I would advocate for it. But a lot, a lot of money is raised by bands, Beta Clubs.
Everything.
Everything. Choir, if you can name it, we do it, we fundraise for it. And we started this during COVID, where there was concern about not only going, spending the money that the school district was spending, but also where people were physically going and coming back into the school district. So that's kind of the history. I don't know if we'll eventually want to change the way we approach that, but like, everything on this list is not necessarily general fund money.
That is correct. Yeah, that's activity money, booster club funds. We even have some organizations that pay for the travel, like our ROTC folks, so yes.
But all of it comes here, but just because it comes through this committee doesn't mean that it is general fund money spent.
And that's an excellent point, because sometimes people could also look at the lists and think there's, things aren't so fair, where you see one school doing certain things and another school not doing those same things, but like you said, some schools are much more successful at raising funds, unfortunately, than some of the other ones.
But I would like to recognize, Ms. Averson, you've done a tremendous job of parsing that out with listing the funds, so we know, in fact, less than 15% of this travel is actually BCSD-paid for travel on this particular one. I appreciate how you've done this to mark it out, so we can clearly see that.
You're very welcome.
Awesome. Sorry, sidebar, thank you.
Any more questions?
Yes, sir.
All in favor of this motion, respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion is approved by a vote of three, two, zero. I mean, three to zero. I mean, three to zero. The second agenda item is funding flexibility. Ms. Averson, you are recognized again.
Thank you. It's that time of year, again, where we get to look at all of our special revenue funds and see what we think we may not spend, and we can flex that over into the general fund. It is definitely not as significant as it's been in past years because they have already rolled up so many special revenue funds into the general fund. But from Fund 318, we anticipate that we may have a carryover amount of $311,000. And then we also have Fund 357. Right now, there's a carryover amount of $353,846. We anticipate that we're going to spend that money, but the way this works is if we don't, we can't ever, we can carry over less, but we can't carry over more. So we always ask to flex more than what we actually carry over. We're relatively certain that $311,000 will be carried over, but the $200,000 that we're requesting to carry over from summer reading may not necessarily be carried over.
It's the pleasure of the committee.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the funding flexibility as presented.
Second.
Do we have any discussion? All in favor of this motion respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion is approved by a vote of three to zero. Our third agenda item is community eligibility program presentation. Ms. Averson, you are recognized.
Thank you. I would like to invite our Director of Child Nutrition, Benny Smith, and she is going to go over this presentation for you this evening.
Good evening, Chairman Ramsey, Chairwoman Wofford, Superintendent Dixon, and members of the board. Thank you for letting me present to you guys tonight. So a little bit about, I was going to go over some topics about us. What is CEP, important information in a board resolution? So we are a USDA program, and we serve with National School Lunch, School Breakfast Program, fresh fruits and vegetables, and Seamless Summer Option was actually started today. All funding for our program comes from federal reimbursement. Our reimbursement is determined by how many students reimbursable meals are served. In order to receive funding, we have to abide by program regulations. Another way that we can generate revenue is through catering and à la carte sales. In essence, we're like a Chick-fil-A that sits in the mall. So we get the perks of being a school district employees, but we also pay the district indirect costs to be inside the building. What is CEP? Stands for Community Eligibility Program. Federal reimbursement options for schools participating in the National School Lunch Program and the School Breakfast Program, serving high-need communities. Allows schools to offer students who attend those schools meals at no cost. A school or group of schools can elect to adopt a CEP if at least 25% of their enrolled students are participating in public benefit programs such as SNAP, TANF, FD, PRI, automatically eligible based on their status of homeless, foster, migrant, or runaway, or enrolled in Head Start. Identified student percentages are the ISP, the number of directly certified students divided by the number of total enrollment multiplied by 100. No schools under the 25% ISP is eligible to become CEP. CEP schools are reimbursed with either federal free claiming rate or the paid claiming rate. No meals are reimbursed at the reduced price. The ISP is multiplied by 1.6 to determine the percent of meals that is reimbursed at the free rate. The rest of the percentage gets reimbursed at the paid rate. Breakfast and lunch meals are at no cost to all students. No change to meal service. Families do not accrue any further meal debt. Students with previous balances will continue to have a negative balance and will follow year to year until paid off. Increases participation in meal service and the student participation is the key. We currently have 33 schools on CEP, and they're all listed for you guys. When we switched last year, we added some more CEP schools. We actually tried to complete the feeder patterns. So we would have, when the first year we did CEP, we had a lot of schools that, let's for instance, say the kids at College Park Elementary and College Park Middle were in a CEP school, but then when they got to Stratford, they were not. And that was very confusing for parents. So we were able last year to complete the feeder patterns to which all of those schools are now CEP, if you can notice up there. Schools that do not qualify at the 25% ISP to be eligible for CEP are Daniel Island, Marionington Elementary, Marionington Middle, Howell Ames, and Philip Simmons High School. Schools that do qualify with the 25% ISP to be eligible for CEP is Kane Bay High, Kane Bay Elementary, Kane Bay Middle, Nixon Elementary, Philip Simmons Elementary, and it should say Middle because it's one kitchen that feeds both schools, Bowen's Corner Elementary, and Carolyn Lewis. Can these schools be added to our existing CEP agreement? Unfortunately, not. We would have to set up a whole new agreement by adding these eight schools in. After the State Department reviewed our numbers, they indicated that since our last CEP agreement, our current CEP schools' ISP has decreased. Additionally, it would not be financially viable to add these sites at this time. There's an email from, I've been working closely with our State Department to see how we could potentially add the eight at 25%. But financially, it does not make sense to add these at this time. They are actually, and it's the last point on this slide, there's actually rumors and talk of the State Department and the USDA changing the ISP percentage back to 60% for the threshold, and then that would put a lot of our families in limbo. So a review after the financial implications indicates the addition of eight schools CEP would not be physically sustainable over a four-year period. Once we change our CEP agreement, we are locked in for four years, and our current agreement is locked in until 2028. There is a possibility, like I just said, that the federal government may revise the CEP eligibility requirements in the coming years to potentially increase the identified student percentage threshold back to 60%.
So I just need to see what your vote would be of whether we want to go forward with adding the eight schools, or we stay where we're at for the next, until 2028 and revisit at that point.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the community eligibility program as presented.
I'll give you a second. So we, yeah, I'll give you...
Hold on, I messed up. Sorry.
Yeah. So what is, what are you recommending? You're recommending to hold on the eight? I just want to make sure I know what I'm saying.
Yes, ma'am.
So you're saying, hold on the eight until some of this other stuff is recognized? So no action?
Correct. So we just, well, I have to have a board resolution.
Have to have a resolution, but the resolution would be to not add the eight schools, no action at this time.
You need the current contract to 2028.
We can revise it. So every April 1st, we have to submit our ISP numbers to the state. We get those back, and then we start looking at, can we add, what do we need to do for the betterment of our district and our students? I just want to make sure, too, that everyone understands that there are, for the schools that are not CEP, there are free and reduced lunch forms online starting July 1st. Like, our families have another avenue to go to make sure that we take care of all the students to the best of our ability.
So second, so Ms. Davenport had the motion to approve the community eligibility program as presented, which is to hold on the eight schools. So I've got a second on that. Sorry, Mr. Ramsey.
What do you think will happen when we add those two new schools? Have you looked into that, or are they part of the eight that you're referring to?
They are not part of the eight.
So what do you think is going to happen with those two, knowing what the pattern is already, the feeder schools?
I'm not sure that they'll make the 25%, the current 25%. But there is a lot of talk of going to 60% again. So that's what makes me nervous, to go to that financially.
Okay.
Any more discussion?
Yes, sir.
All in favor of this motion respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion is approved by a vote of three to zero. Thank you all so much.
Thank you, Benny.
The fourth agenda item is FY 25-26 Capital Project Funding Presentation. Ms. Averson, you are recognized again.
Thank you. I would like to invite Mr. David Sheetwood from First Tryon Advisors. He's our financial advisor, and he's going to present the next agenda item.
Thank you, Marcy. Dr. Dixon, Board Members, good evening. Thanks for having me here, as always. I am here tonight, as Marcy said, just to provide the board with an update on the school district's outstanding debt, an update on your upcoming capital needs, and then the plan of finance to fund those capital needs. Maybe by way of real quick introduction, as I know we have a couple Board members that are new since my last time I was here before you, a year ago. Our firm, First Tryon Advisors, we serve as financial advisor to the school district. We've served in that capacity since 2017, and we help you with long-term financial and capital planning. And so as you have these capital needs coming up, we help you figure out how to fund those needs and what the financial impact is on that. So I always like to start off these presentations with just an overview of the school district's outstanding debt here. So as of June 30 of this year, so in a couple of weeks, the school district will have approximately $281 million of debt outstanding. That is in the form of general obligation bonds and installment purchase revenue bonds. The school district has been rapidly paying off a lot of its outstanding debt, so you've seen this total amount and the number of different series of bonds you have outstanding really get whittled down here over the years. As we stand here today, you've got three series of general obligation bonds outstanding from 2017. You have two series and one from 2024. All of those were approved by referendum in prior years. Total geo-debt, just under $145 million. And then you'll see in that final maturity column, you've got your 2017 Cs that are rolling off in about a year or so, and then again in 2033 and 2037. You also have approximately $136 million outstanding of installment purchase revenue bonds. If you look at that final maturity column, you will see that you are rapidly paying those off. Those have about two to three years to run until you are fully paid off on those. If you look at the, I think I can scroll down here, can I? This is your principal and interest schedule of your remaining debt. You'll see the installment purchase, principal and interest payments in orange, and general obligation in blue. So what you will see here after your fiscal year '29, a very significant cliff, in a good way, drop off of your outstanding debt from about $55 million to $20 million. So that provides you with a lot of capacity going forward to fund additional projects, if you have those, or lower debt service millage as you get into that. And we'll provide you with some more information as we go here.
We're going to build schools.
Build schools, yes. So let's talk about the school projects you have. So a couple of years ago, the school district identified a number of new construction projects, upgrades, repair and replacement projects, technology needs, miscellaneous projects to be funded over a 10-year period. Several of those projects have been bid over the last couple of years and are in progress, and then you have others that we have estimated cost for those. Taking all of that into account, the ones that have been bid and are under construction, ones to come here over the next couple of years, in current dollars, that's about $957 million in our capital plan and our financial plan. We adjust that for inflation for the ones that are to come over the next few years. You'll see different inflation rates in there, depending on when that would come. Total inflation adjusted dollars, a little over $1 billion over this 10-year time period ranging from 2023 to 2033. When we look at our financial plan, we do that on an annual cash flow need. So for all of these projects, a lot of them are one-year projects. If we're looking at technology needs or miscellaneous projects that are funded, repair and replacement, others are the construction upgrades or multi-year projects. So we make an assumption on the cash flow, construction cash flow needs of those. All of the construction renovation upgrade projects, we assume are three-year construction projects, and we have different cash flow spending in each year of those. And for the repair and replacement technology, we assume those are within the given year that the funding need arises. So let's talk about how you fund all of these projects. There's two main revenue sources that the school district has at its disposal to do this. The first one that I'll focus on mainly is the property tax. That's in the form of debt service millage that y'all levy each and every year. Your value, your projected value of a debt service mill in the upcoming fiscal year 2026 is about $2 million. In our financial forecasting, we assume a conservative collection rate of 95% on that $2 million. And then on a going-forward basis, we have a very conservative, because your value of a mill has been growing incredibly strong here over the last many years. We assume a 3% growth rate on that value of a mill in fiscal '27 and '28 and 2% thereafter. It's okay to be conservative on that growth rate because we have a mechanism each year to kind of flush out. If you end up collecting more, then we have a mechanism to flush out any excess revenues that flow into your debt service fund. So better to be conservative than be too aggressive with that and not have enough revenues coming in to pay your debt service in a given year. You all have levied 55 debt service mills over the last two years, and you'll see that that's projected to be the case for the next several years as well. That was a significant step down from the 70 mills that you were at several years ago that coincided with the sales tax, penny tax coming into play as well. Another big, so all of those, the 55 mills worth of property tax revenues flow into the school district's debt service fund. In addition, you have annual fee in lieu of tax revenue that flows into that debt service fund of about $6 million. And then you have some other miscellaneous revenues in the form of multi-county business park revenues, motor carrier revenues. All of those combined, on average, about $4 million per year. So all the revenue that flows into the debt service fund has to be used to pay debt service on general obligation bonds. That's why we're focused on that. As I mentioned, each year around this time, we get an update from the county treasurer about how much is in that debt service fund. Given the conservative assumptions on your value of a mill, you all tend to collect a little bit more than we projected the year prior, but the mechanism is to flush that out with this upcoming bond issuance we'll talk about. So you do all, you're projected to have a balance at June 30 of this year of about $20 million in that debt service fund. We want to maintain a balance in there, again, to guard against under collections here, which has not occurred, but again, you want to be conservative. We'd like to have about $4 million in that on an annual basis. So what that means is we've got about $16 million that we can flush out as a part of this financing as well. The other main revenue source you have to fund some of the new construction projects is the 1% sales tax. That, the collections on that run from, started in May of 2023 and go through April of 2030, seven-year time period. We've got your actual collection rates that have happened over the last couple of years, and then your first quarter so far this year. So we've got some different growth projections on those based on your current collection amounts. So bear with me as we get into a few numbers here, and I'll take you through this chart. So how do you fund that billion dollars of inflation-adjusted projects over this 10-year time period that we're in the midst of, year three or four here? It's a combination of the debt service millage and the sales tax revenue. So, starting from left to right, the gray is what has already transpired. And so back in 2023, you issued general obligation bonds that funded about $60 million of new projects. In addition, you had $33.7 million of sales tax revenues that came in. So you look at the total of those, the inflow of money versus your project funding needs in 2023 were $32 million. So we are to the positive there in that far right-hand column, which is what we're focused on. We want to make sure in this long-term planning, you have enough revenues coming in from these two sources to cover your construction cash flow needs and your other needs. So take it to 2024, same thing. You kept it at 55 mills. We generated $62 million for projects. You had a full year's worth of sales tax collections, which generated $52 million. So you had $70 million coming in, $44 million was projected to go out, so our surplus grew. Now, we start to get into some of the heavier construction time periods and cash flows as some of these projects have been bid and you're starting down that road. So where we are in 2025, recommending staying at the 55-mill debt service levy, that's projected based on that value of a mill and some of the balance in the debt service fund to provide you with $71.3 million or $71.4 million that can go to new projects. We've got a little bit of growth rate on your sales tax there, $55 million. You will start to see those project funding needs really step up again because of multiple projects in play here. So you will see in the combined surplus on an annual basis, certain years where the revenues coming in are less than the funds going out. However, that's why we're focused on that far-right column. And so as long as that stays positive, has a little bit of cushion in it to guard against some of these projects that have not been bid yet, that's the goal here. And you'll see that your low point there would occur sometime between '26 and '27 of about $38 million, so good level of cushion there. I'll also note, when we fast forward a few years, once we get into 2029, you'll see that 8% debt really step up from $66 million to $104 million. The reason behind that is... The reason behind that is, going back to that debt service picture, you have all of those installment purchase revenue bonds maturing in your fiscal year 29. So that'll give you more capacity to fund projects if you wanted to and stay at that 55-mill levy, but you have a lot of flexibility going forward there. One thing to note, you know, these, the bonds, the bond resolution that you have before you, and this has been the case every year, your general obligation bonds would be issued under the school district's 8% capacity. So that does not require voter approval because you all have a, under the state constitution, you can issue general obligation bonds without voter approval up to 8% of your total assessed value. You all don't have any 8% debt outstanding right now because all of those other geo bonds were approved by referendum, and so you have full capacity here. Your total 8% capacity is a little over 150 million right now, and you'll see as we project this out, the orange bars are what we need to make those annual installment purchase revenue bond payments. And then the green is what the new money would be that we just went through, that 70 million, 60 million, et cetera. You'll see that you are still under your 8% debt capacity by a good margin. So you all have good cushion there as well going forward, should you need it. So the resolution that's before Finance Committee tonight and will be before the full board and its next meeting in a couple of weeks here, is a series of general obligation bonds. There's a series 2025A and a series 2025B. The only difference between the two is the 2025A, which is the larger series, is tax-exempt. The 2025B, which is a very small series, is taxable. There's a tax reason for that, to make that taxable. And again, that's been the case each and every year we've done those. So for the 2025A tax-exempt series, that's going to serve two purposes. First, it's going to fund 71.4 million approximately of new money capital projects that we just went through. And then it'll fund your upcoming December 1, 2025, payments on your installment purchase revenue bonds. That's the mechanism to pay the debt service on those installment purchase revenue bonds is to issue a geo bond, the proceeds of which go to make those payments. So the combination of those two is about $106 million between, for the 2025A series. The 2025B series, smaller, about a million and a half. That will fund the June 1 of 2026 interest payments on those same outstanding installment purchase revenue bonds. So if we look at the combination of all of those different amounts, we're approximately about 108 million, 108 to 110 million estimated for those. There is a not-to-exceed borrowing amount in the resolution of 118 million. The reason for the difference is you all are still collecting revenues that are flowing into the debt service fund in May and June. We had the balance as of April 30 from the county treasurer. So we want the ability to flush those additional revenues out. We don't know what those are going to be yet, so we want to give a little bit of cushion there. And so as a board, you will pass a not-to-exceed 118 million, but I'm here to tell you, you would only borrow what your 55 mills will support. So by passing the resolution, you can issue anything under that. And so we would just look at what the additional revenues flow into the debt service fund through June 30 and then capture those while still maintaining the $4 million balance.
And you think 118 million is max? I mean, that's enough space?
Yes, I do. Looking at your past history, you've gotten in, you know, anywhere from 5 to 10 million in those couple of months, May and June. And so that does give us that capacity. Let's say it comes in higher than that, which actually it did last year when we were estimating it came in a little bit higher than the not-to-exceed. That's not lost money, we just flush that out next year. And so it's still there. If, let's say, we could have issued 119 million and met all these parameters, that extra million still sits there, we just access it next year. In terms of the process here, we follow the same process we've been doing with school district for several years. The full board would have the bond resolution up for approval at its next meeting on the 16th. With that in hand, we then prepare, work with Marcy and the team here to prepare an offering document. We get the bonds rated by the rating agencies, go out and sell those bonds. We've, right now, are targeting a sale date of August 26th, and then we would close, meaning money in the bank, on September 11th. And that would allow y'all to, again, do your, all of your projects here. I think that is it. Happy to take any questions?
Just real quick. Debt to pay off, just summarizing in real simple terms, all these numbers and everything we just looked at for everyone. You got debt you have to pay off, 8% money that we can borrow against for our capital projects. It's at a zero balance right now, which is the first time I've known it to be at a zero balance since eight years I've been on board. And just as far as a very significant history lesson, this information was not readily available for me to have access to when I first came on the school board. There was also a lot of bond challenges. There was a lot of challenges that Chair Wofford can attest to. The example I always like to give from my simple explanation is if someone was to go get a interest-only loan and they kept refinancing the interest-only loan and they never paid down the debt, but they kept refinancing so that the bank could keep getting a cut from you refinancing the loan, that was my simple interpretation of the problematic situation that I found us on, in, when I got on the school board, as far as how our bonds were handled in the past. So I say that to thank you for, first, the excellent explanation and also the excellent job I feel that has been going on. But also, when I got on the board, we did not have a 1% sales tax funding mechanism, and we didn't really have a plan for capital projects as far as what we needed to build, what we needed to renovate. So when I look at this now, I have a great sense of pride for what the school district and this board has done. As far as first, you can get the information to understand exactly where we're at, what we owe. You can get the information on what we're paying off. You can get the information on the 8% money, but also the 1% sales tax, which we asked for the voters to approve for certain projects we would do. We lowered the millage rate, sometimes people, which means your property taxes on both commercial, industrial, and residential properties. Because we said, hey, if you would trust us with this 1% sales tax money, in return, we will give you a tax benefit on your property tax bill. So I just want everyone to understand the significance of what just was presented, at least from my point of view, from where we were eight years ago when I came on the school board, to where we're at now and also where we're going in the future, where we're going to have modern facilities for our children to attend. And that's my soapbox, but thank you. Any more discussion?
We appreciate your soapbox very much. I think we were over a half billion dollars' worth of debt when we started paying down. So we've paid down over half of the debt in a short amount of time. So in 2028, we're going to have a lot of capability. So we have a lot of capability now, but we're heading in the right direction, so. And the reduced list of bonds where we're only a couple of bonds left. So thank you, always have given us excellent guidance, and Jeremy Cook is here as well, always tremendous guidance. So, all right, I think you need this.
That's just information, so on to the next one.
Oh, I thought we were doing general bond obligation resolution. That's Jeremy's presentation.
Yep. The next one is, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So.
Mr. Chair, is he going to be here next time, or can I ask questions?
Oh, yeah. We'll have questions on this next one.
He won't be here at the next meeting. This is the opportunity to ask questions. Yes, ma'am.
The ones that are hitting final maturity are not optional for refi. Those are the dead dates.
That's correct.
Okay. We could, of course, issue new bonds, but those are the dead dates for those.
Yes. Y'all have taken advantage of refinancing opportunities in the past when they presented themselves, when interest rates allowed for that, so y'all have been able to do that along the way, but those are no longer eligible.
That's, thank you. On page two, you listed the project build-out, the 957 inflated at 1.04 billion. Is that total or is that total remaining?
That is total, going back to the start.
That's historical and future going forward.
That's right.
And I guess my only other question, because you're correct, is certainly going in the right direction. This is about $20 million more than the request was this time last year? Is, why is that? Last year was about a 97 million ask.
You're exactly right. The reason for that is your value of a mill has grown over the course of last year.
Refire to buy out new debt. Okay, thank you.
That's true, yeah. And one thing to note, I failed to mention this, you know, we talked about the outstanding debt. This debt will be repaid inside of a year, and so that's been your norm. So while you would issue 118 million, when I'm here next year in June, you will have already paid it off with those revenue streams. So it's not like this is long-term debt that's going to be out there.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any more discussion? Okay, thank you, sir. Our fifth agenda item is general obligation bond resolution. Ms. Haberson, you are recognized again.
Thank you. And at this time, I would like to invite our own bond attorney, Jeremy Cook, to present the next item.
Good evening. It's good to be back with you all again. David just had a very thorough presentation and I think really good discussion, really good questions from some newer folks. So it's certainly a very positive time to do this work. Like David, I do this all around the states with cities, counties, and school districts. And Michael, to your point, you're probably one of the only, perhaps in my almost 30 years I've done this, that has any point where you say you have no 8% debt outstanding, and that's extraordinary. But it really gives the board a lot of flexibility going forward to meet that billion-dollar building need. So this resolution is what the board does every June, come into Finance and then the full board. We prepare for that August sale and September close, not exceed 118 million, the two series that David talked about. Under state law, general obligation bonds are required to be sold to the lowest conforming bidder. That's a constitutional requirement. So these bonds will be sold on a national platform and be bid on by investment banks around the country and then resold to individual investors. So the Wells Fargo, the JP Morgan, the Bank of America Securities, and these series will be sold separately. And then, and resolution also authorizes the board chair, secretary, superintendent, and other cabinet officials as needed to do all the signing of documents in September that really leads to the money in the bank. The taxable bond pays off first in March, so that'll be March of '26. And the tax-exempt bond, because it's a much bigger payment and you need all your taxes in, will pay off the beginning of June. So to David's point, when we come back here next June, these bonds have come and gone. And then another year's worth of payments on both the IPRBs, installment purchase revenue bonds, and the GOs have already happened as well. And the last thing I'll point out, you'll notice a couple, to the question on the refundings, a couple of the bonds that are short in duration remaining. There's a Series 23 IPRB you'll see that you're making a payment on, and then one of the three outstanding GOs was the Series 24. Those were both refinancings that were done, not surprisingly, in '23 and '24. But in both cases, those rates were, by this board, authorized on a forward-looking basis. So those rates were actually entered into or agreed to a couple of years before that. So you actually got disproportionately lower rates than you would have if you'd done them in '23 and '24 because you agreed to the rates back in like '21 and '22 when rates were lower. So it's been a long process of forward-thinking-ness, a little bit by us, but a lot more by the folks sitting up there and here. So, but that's my overview. This is the resolution, not to exceed 118 million. Obviously, it can be less than that, can't be more than that. But any questions on the resolution?
What is the pleasure of the committee?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the issuance of sale of general obligation bonds of the school district in the principal amount, not to exceed 118 million, for the purposes of repayment of existing debt, funding capital projects, and funding other initiatives of the school district and paying the cost of the issuance of the bonds.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any more discussion? Oh, in favor of this motion, respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. The motion is approved by a vote of three to zero. Thank you, Jeremy. The sixth agenda item is FY 2526 General Fund Budget, first reading. Ms. Haberson, you are recognized again.
Thank you. And I would like to take a moment to just thank David Cheatwood and his team at First Tryon and Jeremy Cook. Since I've been CFO, I've learned a lot from them, and they've been very gracious with teaching me and helping me. And this district is a trend center, and it is thanks to them and to the wise decisions of our board. I've lost mine. We're back in business. Okay, so for our first reading of our general fund budget, and I recycled a slide and I named myself interim CFO, but I have been the official CFO since July 2023. So that's what I get for rushing.
No take-backs, so.
So for our consideration for our budget changes for FY 2526, again, like we have discussed in the last two workshops, we're going to collapse that bachelor's into the bachelor's plus 18 to mirror what the state is doing with the teacher salary schedule. And then we're going to take each cell on the current teacher salary schedule and increase it by $2,500. And with this transition, where it will move a Berkeley County School District first-year teacher salary from, it will increase by about $4,320. We're currently at like 52,450. So that's, getting, our goal was to get to 50,000, and we've definitely surpassed that, and hopefully we'll soon be at 60,000. All other positions will receive a 2% COLA, again, which mirrors what the state is doing. They're doing a 2% COLA this year. We wanted to add some additional years to our salary schedule to get to 35 years. Unfortunately, we're not going to be able to do that this year, so we're going to stay at the 31 years. We are going to utilize the 2526 supply and travel allocation formula that we presented at the last board meeting, and basically those budgets have been unchanged since '23, '24, and except for making the increase for the security guards. Our department budgets for supplies and services is being reduced to achieve an overall general fund budget of $65.4 million with no reductions made at the school level or to our instructional budgets, and we are going to maintain our current 141.9 millage rate. This is a snapshot of our teacher salary schedule. I added the previous bachelor's column for you as a informational tool, just so you can see what that looks like. So as you can tell, a big, significant part of our budget is always salaries. And next year, based on everything that I'm hearing, I think we're going to be doing the same thing with the master's salary schedule, we'll be collapsing that, and so you'll just have a bachelor's, a master's, and a doctorate salary schedule. Our revenues and expenses, this is our comparison from last year, our amended budget from, for '24, '25 was $475.1 million. We're expecting our '25, '26 budget to be $485.7 million. The Bureau of Economic Advisers did meet on May 20th, and there was some surplus revenue, so we may get some additional money. I'm holding my breath. So hopefully that will be some good news when we get the money, the distribution from the, from the State Department of Education, hopefully before our next, our second reading. If we do not, then I will bring it back as a budget amendment. But all of the Senate, the Senate and the House budget, they allowed all of the increases. Everything went through because they found that additional surplus revenue. So it looks like we may get some money back.
Anytime somebody finds money, it makes me very concerned about where the money was lost. But anyway, that's beside the point.
And what happens when we lose it next time?
For this, I was gonna say, for the state, yeah, they stress me out, but that's not us, but.
Well, I think they do the same. They try, we're a very conservative state. We try to be very conservative, and as the year starts to close and we realize we have those additional funds on hand, so, you know, I appreciate that they are a little bit conservative and give us a surprise at the end of the day so that we don't over-budget. at the end of the day, so that we don't over-budget. So just for our benefits, our expenditures, the majority of that is salaries and benefits. It's normally between 84% and 85% of our budget. This year, it's getting close to that 87%. But that just shows that we're taking good care of our employees, and we're prioritizing salaries and things like that. And then also, those, that purchase service supplies and equipment, yes, we are decreasing that budget somewhat, however, it is not impacting the classroom, it is not impacting school budgets, it is, it was so, those cuts were made solely at the district and department levels.
Can you go back one, go back to where you just left? And I'm going to see if you can think on your feet. Give me an example of an unbudgeted revenue.
That would be like our rental income for our facility use, also interest that we earned on our fund balance, many, those are two of the big ones.
Okay, so I'm going to take a leap of faith. One year ago, we sat in the same position, talking about the budget. There was a question asked by Ms. Littleton to see what would happen if we closed JK. We were told that there would be a $1.5 million saving. I was also, or we were told also that the funding for JK would follow the students as well as the teachers, I guess, everyone who was at JK who elected to move on to a new location. This year, they now have to reapply for those positions. That's what I was told last year, and I'm looking to hear what's going to happen this year. And it may be not your area of information, but the 1.5 is. Last board meeting, you asked that we move 5.1 million to the general fund, if I remember correctly.
That was for the special, the incentive payments that we did for our sped teachers and paraprofessionals.
So that 1.5 was not a part of the 5 million that was asked to be moved?
No, ma'am. That was, that 5.1 million was strictly for the incentive payments for our sped teachers.
Okay. All right. So the indirect cost of a million dollars, again, I'm asking you on the top of your head, can you think of an indirect cost that would generate funds, other than the unbudgeted, unbudgeted revenue you already mentioned? An example of an indirect cost?
Not in the general fund.
Right, but you have it listed under revenue type, so I'm just trying to get an example of an indirect unbudgeted cost. Are they almost the same type thing? I see where the rest of the money is coming from. I can figure out where these funds are coming in from, but when it's indirect.
The indirect cost line for a million dollars is that, that specific line you're just, you're asking about?
Right.
Okay, those are like, when Benny did her presentation, and she talked about how they're like Chick-fil-A, and they pay us to be in our schools. That is indirect cost that's charged back and given to the general fund from our USDA funds, and then we also have that same ability with some of our special revenue funds. It's basically like the administrative costs back to the district for managing those funds.
Okay, and the last one has impact aid revenue. Impact as in the county impact fees, that's totally different, so impact aid refers to...
The impact aid, that is the federal cards that we fill out every year, and that's the money we get from the federal government based on the responses to those federal cards.
Okay.
It's, it's been called impact aid since I've been here, but it's basically the money we get for our military children, our people that are employed on federal property.
Got you, okay. All right, go ahead. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so this just gives us a quick overview of what our five-year growth revenue has looked like. In '21, '22, we were at 336 million, and this year, we are hoping to be at 485.7 million. As you can see, this year's growth is a little bit more conservative than prior years, and that's because we kind of overshot on our reassessment last year. But, but we still have a strong growth in our county, and I feel very certain that this is, again, a conservative estimate, and we will, we will be fine. The budget schedule is to have another, a public hearing on June 16th, and do our second final reading on June 16th, and then if there are any significant changes thereafter, it will be brought back to the board as a budget amendment. Any questions?
What is the pleasure of the committee?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the first reading of the 25-26 general fund budget as presented.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any more discussion?
No, sir.
All in favor of this motion, respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion is approved, a vote of three to zero. Thank you, Ms. Haberson.
Thank you.
The seventh agenda item is policy GBC staff compensation, payroll practices and deductions. Second reading. Dr. Karen Whitley, you're recognized.
Good evening, Committee Chair Ramsey, Board Chair Wofford, Superintendent Dixon, and board members. Policy GBC staff compensation, payroll practices and deductions, second reading. We are asking for the second reading approval. Staff compensation, payroll practices, and deduction policy was last updated in June 2021. The policy's been updated to change pay for all employees from a semi-monthly pay schedule to a bi-weekly, every other Friday. This would be a difference from the current policy of 24 paychecks in a school year to 26 paychecks in a school year, beginning with the first payroll in July for 245-day employees, August 8th for 200 to 225-day employees, and August 22nd for all other employees. Additionally, the policy's been amended to read, "To allow for deductions to exempt employee's salary for partial day absence in certain circumstances permitted by the Fair Labor Standards Act under 29 CFRS 541.710."
What is the pleasure of the committee?
Mr. Chair, I move to amend the proposed revised policy GBC to allow for deductions to exempt employee salaries for partial day absences in certain circumstances permitted by the Fair Labor Standards Act under 29 CFRS 541.710 as presented by administration.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion?
No, sir.
All in favor of this motion, respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion is approved, three to zero. Our eighth agenda item is policy GCCA, vacation leave and holiday, second reading. Dr. Whitley, you're recognized again.
Administration is asking for a reading approval of policy GCCA, vacation leave and holiday. This policy was last updated in August of 2020. The policy's been updated to address leave accrual for full-time 12-month employees or those employees working 245 days per year. Those individuals with 0 to 9 years of service will accrue 6.67 hours a month with a total of 80 vacation hours or 10 vacation days accrued over the course of a year. Those full-time 12-month employees with 10-plus years of service will accrue 10 hours a month with a total of 120 vacation hours or 15 vacation days per year. Full-time 11-month employees will receive five days of vacation and will accrue in hours based on the number of hours worked per day. This will begin July 1st, 2025.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the second policy, second reading of policy GCCA, vacation leave and holidays, as presented by administration.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion?
Just a quick question.
Go ahead, Ms. Haberson.
This is for current employees, right?
Yes, ma'am.
So when, when, when I leave, I retire, I move on, does what I have left travel with me? Can, and I know it's been years since I left, what goes with me, what I have left? Which is a number? What's the number that I can take with me?
Sick leave goes with you, vacation leave does not.
Say that one more time. Sick leave, whatever I have, goes with me?
Sick leave can go with you up to, I think it's 90 days, I don't know, I'll have to check on that to be sure.
Ms. Dickerson is here. Ms. Dickerson.
I know holiday doesn't count, I know that, but it's the sick leave and the, and the personal leave or the vacation time.
Good evening. Employees are paid out for 96 days, and any vacation that they have, they are paid out at their daily rate, up to 45 days.
So anything over 45, I just technically lose, but you will pay me my daily rate for 45?
That is correct.
Okay.
$20 per day for sick leave up to 90 days.
Okay, all right. And like I said, it's been a long time. Okay.
Ready, call it?
Any more discussion? All in favor of this motion, respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion is approved, three to zero. The ninth agenda item is policy GCCA, sick leave, second reading. Dr. Whitley, you're recognized again.
Thank you. Administration is asking for second reading approval for policy GCCA, sick leave. This policy was last updated in June of 2021. The policy is updated to include a chart to show the accrual for sick leave for all employees, such as those working 185 days to 245 days. The chart shows the hours worked per day, per employee, the accrual per day, annual accrual per hours, and monthly accrual. Additionally, the policy is updated to include information pertaining to personal leave. This section reads, "Employees are entitled to use up to five days per year of sick leave as personal leave, subject to authorization by the employee's immediate supervisor. Immediate supervisors may refuse to authorize the use of personal days if, in the opinion of the supervisor, the absence of the employee during the requested time would be detrimental to the mission and operation of the schools. Personal days may not be used at the following times: during the first 10 and last 10 school days of the school year; on days which immediately precede and/or immediately follow time periods designated as holidays, staff development, etc. on the school calendar; during state testing periods and/or during other major testing periods as designated by the district; on the last teacher work day of the year, and on staff development days. Use of personal days in any manner that is prohibited by provisions of this rule will result in loss of pay for the day or days used, and possibly further discipline." The line, "Once they have exhausted their vacation leave, or if they are not entitled to vacation leave," has been stripped through for second reading. Additionally, this will allow staff five of their total sick days to be used as personal leave.
Mr. Chair, I move to amend proposed revised policy GCCA by striking the phrase, quote, "Once they have exhausted their vacation leave, or if they are not entitled to vacation leave," end quote, in the first sentence of the proposed personal leave section as presented by administration.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion?
No, sir.
All in favor of this motion, respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion approved, three to zero. Our tenth agenda item is policy GCCA, other leave, second reading. Dr. Whitley, you're recognized again.
Thank you. Administration is asking for second reading approval for policy GCCA, other leave. This policy was last updated in September of 2018. The policy is updated to include for absences caused by emergencies and other special circumstances that are not covered by the district's leave policies. Employees may use sick leave in accordance with policy GCCA. The policy revisions include, if an employee does not have available vacation or sick leave for such absences, an employee may be granted unpaid leave. All requests for unpaid leave must be approved by the Human Resources Department.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the second reading of policy GCCA, other leave, as presented by administration.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? All in favor of this motion, respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion is approved, three to zero. Thank you, Dr. Whitley.
Thank you.
At this time, I entertain a motion to adjourn this committee meeting, so the Capital Planning Committee meeting me begin.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? All in favor of this motion, respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion approved, three to zero.
I'm calling the Committee on Capital Planning to order. I declare there is a quorum of committee members present, and note that the media has been given proper notice pursuant to the Freedom of Information Act. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I make the motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor of this motion, respond by saying aye.
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 All opposed? Nay. Approved, three to zero. The first agenda item is RFQ 726-24-25, Architectural and Engineering Services for the indefinite quantity contract. Dr. Karen Whitley, you're recognized.
Good evening again, Committee Chair Baker, Board Chair Wofford, Superintendent Dixon, committee and board members. I would like to invite Ms. McNeil up to present Agenda Item 2A.
Thank you, Dr. Whitley. Greetings, committee members, board members, and superintendent. This evening, we present for review and approval RFQ 726, Architectural and Engineering Services for indefinite quantity contract. The district intends to utilize the services, the A&E services, for various project, projects as needed, on an as-need basis. The solicitation and award process adhere to established procurement procedures. A total of 13 proposals were received, and interviews were conducted with all offers. The award was granted to the highest, to the six highest-ranked proposals, one being FW Architects, Mosley Architects, Capella Co. Architects, Hull Building Systems is an engineering firm, DWG Consulting Engineering, and MacMillan Pazdas Smith Architects.
Thank you. So I'll make a motion to approve the award for RFQ 726-24-25, Architectural and Engineering Services for an indefinite quantity contract, to FW Architects, Mosley Architects, Capella Co. Architects, Hull Building Systems, DWG Consulting Engineers, and MacMillan Pazden Smith Architecture, with a single project limit up to $100,000 or an indefinite delivery contract, not to exceed $300,000 over a two-year term as presented. We have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
So I have one question. What is an indefinite quantity contract? I've never heard of that.
It's an IDC. We usually call it our IDC, where we don't know the quantities or what we have in place. Basically, we put it in place, we choose, we chose these architects as a list, so as the projects become available, we call on them, and then at that time, they'll provide us the services.
And I see there, there's a timeframe and financial limits in the motion.
Yes, ma'am.
So they could engineer 10, $10,000 projects, or they could engineer one $99,000 project? So the indefinite quantity is the... So the indefinite quantity is the number of times we'll tap someone, depending on whatever capital projects we have to design for?
That's right. And they have a limit of 300 grand to spend over two years.
Thank you all.
Any additional discussion? All in favor of this motion, respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion is approved, three to zero. Second agenda item is RFQ 731 24 dash 25, Construction Manager at Risk Services for Berkeley High School Classroom Edition. Dr. Whitley, you are again recognized.
Thank you. I would like to invite Ms. McNeil up to present Agenda Item 2B.
This evening, we present for review and approval RFQ for Construction Manager at Risk for Berkeley High School Classroom Edition Project. The, the district reserve, well, excuse me, the district requires these services for the Berkeley High School. The solicitation and award process followed established procurement procedures. A total of seven proposals were received and thoroughly reviewed. The top three firms were selected for interviews. And followed the, the interview process, the award was granted to the highest-ranked proposal, H.G. Reynolds. We met with H.G. Reynolds to review the, to review and discuss the district progress and vision for this project. The firm submitted a proposal of $95,000 for pre-construction services. Once the design phase is completed, the GMP will be presented to the board for approval.
All right. I'll make a motion to approve the award of request for qualification 731 24 dash 25, Construction Manager at Risk Services for Berkeley High School Classrooms Edition to H.G. Reynolds for Pre-Construction Services, total of $95,000.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
You read "at risk services," or is it "of risk services"? It's okay, tell me what "at risk services" mean, or "of risk services."
So there's, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
The construction manager basically is taking on all of the risks within their project, within the project. We ask them for a total amount, what they see to project for the construction. So basically, now they're starting with the construction, the pre-construction for it, but once the design, they come back with the guaranteed, the GMP, which means the guaranteed maximum price that they set to build the school for us.
So there's, there's also a thing called a "construction manager."
I got that part.
That contract would be different. You'd hire a construction management firm to kind of work for you to execute the project and make sure it goes like how it's supposed to, but that, their contracts are different.
See, I thought-
If we had a construction manager, they would not be contracted with a contract.
I thought we hired somebody to do that, did we not? We, we hired some people-
The last one we did for Berkeley High School was, I think, the award to Mosley, I could be wrong, for the architectural services.
So we hire at each portion, each part of the construction? We hire a new construction manager that is not a part of the district? I guess that's what I'm getting to.
Correct. So the, you went to Bee Tree Elementary, correct? The contractor building that school is the same one who's going to build the addition, if we approve it, at Berkeley High School. That is designed by Mosley, a different architect that designed Bee Tree. So they're a contractor firm performing construction management at-risk duties.
So I, I guess my question still becomes, we don't have these people on staff to do that and/or those that we have on staff are doing other things. Is that what I'm understanding?
May I ask it another way? We hired staff to be on-site for projects. We call them project managers.
Correct.
What's the difference between our staff project managers and these folks on-site?
And a construction manager on, at risk?
That, I think, is what we need in explanation.
The construction manager at risk is really a delivery method. They're actually a general contractor that we're going to hire pre-construction services from them to work with the design team and us to look at the design for constructibility. They go through pricing exercises, where it's going to be built. They help us design it also to make sure it's constructible, we're not leaving anything out structurally, we're building it in the correct spot that's going to work best for everyone.
So then my next question becomes, we don't have a site surveyor to do these types of things. We don't have anybody in-house that can do these things at that level. Is that what I'm understanding as well?
At that level, we have already done that with our staff.
Okay.
So we're turning what we have over to the architect and the CMR, Construction Manager at Risk, to review all of this stuff to make sure we're not wrong. And they have more experience in it than we do.
And this person gets at least $95,000. Now, for me, an outsider, does not know engineering, does not know construction, but if H.G. Reynolds is doing one school, and now they're doing another school, all the same aspects of each school is the same, do we continue to pay each school?
It's site-specific. So what they're going to go evaluate at Berkeley High School by tearing down the annex and, and there's lots of things that they have to mitigate by tearing that down, they have to evaluate that site. Like building on a, on a site where we have a building is totally different assessment than building on raw land.
I got that part.
It's just, like permitting is different. They carry licenses. I mean, I carry a license, but they carry license and insurance and, and experience that we can't afford on our staff. People that make hundreds of thousands of dollars that we can't afford on our staff to do, and each site has its own specific, like you have to make sure sewer can get there, electricity can get there. You have to make sure that when you disrupt that much land, there's a stormwater, like protection, like you can't erode dirt into the, to the fresh water. Like there are tons of environmental and like considerations that you have to bring to a site. The site is far away, it's different, it's harder, it's different, you got to build roads too. If it's on a site, you have to consider, like where the electricity is on Berkeley's current campus and where, like, there are a lot of things to consider that we don't-
So then this is, this, this-
We don't have.
This will be my last question on this issue. Anytime, whenever we build, we're going to have one, either, a go-between, I call it, okay, to us, you, and the contractor. Is that what I'm understanding as well?
Not, not every time. So each project has its own differences, and there's several different delivery methods you can pick as like a tool to use for that project depending on the outcome you need or want. And as what we've done with the two new schools under construction to three, the two new ones in the renovation, we did CMR, CM at Risk. And also, these two additions, I think, are better suited for the CM at Risk because of the complications of an addition, to bring that expert in early on, to work with the design team, the architect. So like, if, if you've ever built a house or anything, you have, you pay for a set of plans, the architect doesn't, he may miss something. So this is an extra set of eyes to review and design with them from a contractor standpoint so we don't miss anything.
So one final question. I know I said that was the last one. Where does the county department, or the county, Berkeley County's permitting, engineering, are, their group fit in? None of this? He, this, this construction manager takes everything to them, ready to go?
So the county, we don't, the only permit we get from the county is like what Ms. Wofford was saying was the SWIP, the Stormwater Inlet Protection Plan. The state is our governing body, body for-
Okay.
-construction.
Okay. All right. Because I remember us doing this, like I said, not too long ago. So I'm just wondering how many construction managers or site supervisors or whatever name you want to call them are going to be. So as we build a project, we have a construction manager possibly at risk for each of those projects now and to come. I just want to be aware of who's, who's coming in garnering the funds. That's me. I'm sorry.
So that, so our staff is on-site every day. We're there-
Right.
-this whole process.
Okay.
We're there.
Okay.
This is an extra set of eyes with more experience to help the design team design it.
Okay.
And it's going to take almost a year, so that's why it's $95,000. They dedicate staff for over the next 10 months to work with the architect and us to design this.
Okay. And if there's an error, who do I come back to?
We'll deal with it if it happens.
Okay. If there's an overrun?
I was going to say, it's-
That's why I said risk.
That's why it's at risk, because they are carrying insurance and they're carrying licenses that we don't carry.
Yeah. That's the benefit of CMR, is you get them involved at the beginning of the design process. So the other, you know, what's traditionally been done, design it, then you bid it, then they build it, and they're designing that green site, and you run into a lot of stuff, and there may be change orders that are unaccounted for. So this is, this way, Mr. Hemstrack can go back to the gentleman, I forget your name, and say, "We're not paying you for that."
Yeah, it puts them in the boat.
They assume the risk.
Oh, that makes sense. So because they're there in the beginning, if they're wrong, then they're going to be taking accountability for being wrong once the construction phase starts.
They're in the boat from the beginning.
Okay.
So no change orders.
The option is with the other, there will be change orders, there'll be-
Potentially.
Potentially, if there's issues, if there are issues, potentially.
So in the, you know, you dig in the ground, there's always going to be something. But they put those contingencies in there to hopefully cover that.
Perfect. That makes sense. Thank you.
Any more discussion?
I think I've learned enough tonight.
All in favor of this motion, respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion is approved by a vote of three to zero. This time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Dr. Whitley and Ms. Robin.
Okay.
To adjourn the committee. Have a motion?
Second.
All right. I didn't hear y'all start yapping. So we have a motion or a second. Any discussion? All in favor of this motion, respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion is approved, three to zero.
We have two items to return to regular session. So first is Chair Michael Ramsey. We're bringing one item forward tonight, which is the first reading of the general fund budget. Mr. Ramsey, you're recognized.
Mr. Ramsey is not here.
Oh, well. I was going to say, yeah, I did not realize that he had stepped out. I can do it. I'll say, Ms. Davenport, if you will read the committee report.
Yes, ma'am. Madam Chairwoman, the Committee on Finance and Human Resources met earlier this evening, and on recommendation of the committee, I move to approve the first reading of the fiscal year 2526 general fund budget as presented.
We have a recommendation from committee, no second is required. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay?
Nay.
The ayes have it, seven, one.
Madam Chairwoman, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Next is the Committee on Capital Planning. Chairman Joe Baker, you are recognized.
Madam Chairwoman, the Committee on Capital Planning met earlier this evening, and on recommendation of the committee, I move to approve the award of request for qualification 731 24 dash 25, Construction Manager at Risk for services, services for Berkeley High School Classroom Edition to H.G. Reynolds for the pre-con services, total of $95,000.
We have a recommendation from committee, no second is required. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay? The ayes have it, eight, zero.
Madam Chairwoman, that concludes my report.
I will now entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I've got a motion from Ms. Davenport, a second by Mr. McQuillan to adjourn. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay? We are adjourned.
Don't forget the topping out at next.